Good morning and welcome.
Oh, it's the table.
Okay, I'm tuning.
Turn it.
All right, there we go. Good morning, welcome to regular session, Monday, April seventh, Commissioner's Court. We have a full forum present here, you certify the meeting and probably post it. Uh, would you please rise for prayer and pledges, James Ryan?
Father, we hum the bow before you. Asking for your presence to be made. To this court, Father, then you give us the wisdom that we so desperately need. Father, young children that we have not because we ask not, Father, we're asking for your presence this morning. Father, we ask that you lead us in God's and all that we do, and all that we do may be pleasing to you. These things we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor under the Texas flag, of the United States of the United States, one state, indivisible.
All right, I didn't receive any citizens input for agenda items, do we have any? All right, consent is nine items.
I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda, removing numbers six, seven, eight, nine, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-three. Second.
Moving same to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number six, approved proclamation twenty twenty-five dash four nine declaring April thirteenth through April nineteenth as National Public Safety Telecommunication Week.
All right, we're gonna read this and I think we'll get some good representation here. It starts out proclamation twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine, National Public Safety Telecommunication. The ninth thing. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, they require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency acquires the proper response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical for the protection and preservation of life and property. And whereas public safety telecommunicators answer those calls for assistance and are the first and for some the most critical contact uh, our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who's telephone the Walker County Public Safety Communication Center. And whereas telecommunicators are a vital link for our officers, our police officer, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities via the radio and other electronic means, providing them with valuable information and ensuring their safety. And whereas telecommunicators of the Walker County Public Safety Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, treatment of patients, and insurance of caller safety. And whereas to each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in the past years. And whereas Texas was the first state to recognize emergency service dispatchers that provide communication support services for public safety agencies by responding to requests for assistance in emergencies at first responders. Therefore, be it resolved at Commissioner's Court of Walker County, Texas, declares the week of April thirteenth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Walker County and honor the men and women for diligent and professionalism keeps our county and citizens safe.
I'll move.
I'll move motion, we cert number six, proclamation twenty twenty-five dash forty-nine.
Second.
Moving same to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Picture.
Yep.
Thank y'all for what y'all do for the county.
It is a, it is a job most people take for granted, I guarantee.
Yeah, most people don't even know you there.
We know.
But we do.
Once they need you, they realize. Y'all been there a long time.
Right, this is actually the twenty-fifth year it's been has a communications center.
There you go.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. Anthony, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right, number seven, approved proclamation twenty twenty-five dash fifty. The Department of Family Protective Services declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, that's my motion. Moved in second all in favor, raise your hand. Brandon, motion carries. Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation twenty twenty-five dash fifty. Children thrive in safe, stable nurturing families within their own Texas communities. While it is critical to build a system that supports families when they are in a crisis, intentionally supporting families before they are in a crisis is essential to preventing the abuse and maltreatment of Texas children. Through establishing partnerships with families that capitalize on the collective strengths of parents and their children, we can build strong, healthy families and resilient communities where children can thrive. Sadly, child malnutrition is still a sufficient public health issue. Communities that lack assess accessible supports and resources can experience increased risk factors that lead to child abuse and neglect. Despite the complex factors that can lead to child child malnutrition, maltreatment, it can be prevented. Each year, the month of April is dedicated to recognize the critical work being done across our great states to support families before a crisis occurs and offers them accessible lifelines that mitigate the challenges they face. Child abuse prevention occurs every day through the diligent work and tireless advocates undertaken by Texas families, friends, neighbors, houses of faith, advocacy groups, nonprofit organizations, schools, healthcare providers, social workers, government agencies to support children and families in every community across the Lone Star State. Child abuse prevention cannot be tasked to one community, agency, or system. Behind many families that succeed success is a strong community that provided a way for the families to become self-sufficient, stable, and thrive. All Texans must work together to strengthen our communities and build localized supports that are accessible, contribute to the well-being of the entire community, and keep children and families safe together. I encourage all Texans to learn more about many aspects of our community, working hard to create positive, healthy environments for the future leaders of our great, great nation. Together, we can create a brighter future for children, family, and communities in Texas and ensure tomorrow's leaders have the support they need to thrive and reach their potential. Therefore, Walker County Commissioners does hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Walker County and urge the appropriate recognition there on signing this day, the seventh of April. Y'all wanna come up? We have our CPS board here.
Trace.
Sorry.
Morning Trace.
Morning.
Want to go slow so you can read it.
Yeah. Sign next to mine, I can't.
You can't reach yours at all.
I look better than you. Exactly. Take a look.
No, you're good. No, you're good. You're not, you're not, it's all Anthony.
Anthony's just towered over all of us. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Y'all do. Good job, what y'all do for us. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate y'all signing up with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, number eight, approved proclamation twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one from Casa Walker County declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. That's, that'll be my motion. Moving same to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Well, that's.
He had the second though. Proclamation twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one, National Child Abuse Prevention Month, April twenty twenty-five. Whereas in federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services confirmed fifty-three thousand five hundred and forty three victims of child abuse or neglect, including eighty-five in Walker County. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Texas. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solution require, solutions require input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas the impact of abuse and neglect has long-term personal, economical, and social costs, therefore hurting Texas futures, Texas's future. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for children and families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as community and increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. Whereas court-appointed special advocates, CASA volunteers were assigned by the court to speak up for a child's best interest, help ensure a child's voice is heard. Whereas CASA volunteers spoke up for the best interest of eighteen thousand two hundred and eight children in Texas last year. Whereas CASA, Child Protective Services, Child Advocacy, advocacy centers, foster parents, teachers, and others worked to ensure that children in our community have a safe and happy future. Now, therefore, the Walker County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Walker County and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and family.
Good morning.
Morning.
See, he hides back there.
I gotta get brave.
I'm not that big of a guy.
Better.
It's all bad. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
That's what I was wondering.
Uh, number nine, approved proclamation twenty twenty-five dash five-two declaring April of, April as Sexual Assault Prevention and Awareness Month. That'll be my motion.
I'll second that.
Moving same to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
I'll be reading this one proclamation twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month, twenty twenty-five. Whereas sexual assault is a serious crime that affects individuals and families throughout Walker County. And whereas the Walker County Commissioners Court acknowledges the necessity of comprehensive support systems for survivors, and whereas local agencies, advocates, and volunteers are tirelessly working to provide education, prevention, and intervention services. And whereas community awareness and proactive measures are vital in reducing the incidence of sexual violence. Whereas the following statistics will reflect the need for the community to embrace the twenty twenty-five Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month theme of together we act, united we change, emphasizing the importance of collective action in addressing, educating, and preventing sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. Number one, every sixty-eight seconds, an American is sexually assaulted, and every nine minutes, that victim is a child. Meanwhile, only twenty-five out of every thousand perpetrators will end up in. Number two, nine of every ten victims of rape are female. Number three, fifty-five percent of sexual assault occurs at or near the victim's home. Four, two out of three sexual assaults go unreported. And five, Walker County asked for the state auditor's office, October twenty twenty, reported incidents, a hundred and eighty-two thousand, a hundred and eighty-two reported incidents, sixty-six arrest charges acquitted or not guilty, there was one, nine were convicted, six were deferred, and sixteen were dismissed. Now, therefore, the Walker County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in Walker County and calls upon all residents to join in efforts to support survivors and prevent sexual assault. Yes, I'm representing this from the safe house here.
Absolutely. See someone.
How did you get out of reading one?
Well. Let me just put this first. Here's the deal.
They was afraid I couldn't pronounce the words.
All of us went to hospital.
Yeah. Except for Bill, you know.
You had to go on notice, I was doing good to get. Thank y'all. Thank you.
On the number seventeen, approved disposal of FAS number eleven, one nine eight Motorola XTS twenty-five hundred, Gospel Precinct four.
So I asked to pull this off there, I know some of these were just uh, not, not very functional. Some of them are replaced with encryption on them. So my question or my proposal report is uh, Ms. Cheryl could reach out to our local fire departments that could have these reprogrammed and keep them in the county, wanna get pennies on the dollar.
I mean, I'm fine with it, they're worth fixing more than.
Yeah, I'm, some of them are gonna be junk, some of them aren't, but I'm just asking for them to have the opportunity. So my motion is gonna be to approve disposal, um, but allowing Cheryl to uh, distribute these to the fire departments or ask the fire departments to uh, request them.
I'll second that.
Before disposal.
I've been sending.
Before disposal.
We've been sending Joe over there from Emergency Management to go through and pull out all the parts they need so they can have them stacked.
Right.
But we can do the same.
Do the same for the.
I got a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number nineteen, approved disposal of FAS number ten, six, one, four, five point five KW generator.
Who's gonna pull this one, Judge? It doesn't require any action, we located that generator.
Number twenty-three, approved disposal of forty-one Motorola in-car XTL twenty-five hundred and XTS twenty-five hundred radios from Sheriff's Office. Same deal?
Same deal, same motion. Approved disposal, um, after the fire departments have reached out to.
Moving same to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number thirty, jail, discuss and take action on renewal of NCIC phone service agreement at Walker County.
We just pulled, we pulled night.
There you go.
John?
Yeah.
It's just the renewal of our agreement within. It's been pretty good, just past six months, they expanded to thirty-five, putting them again. Starting to try out. For the trustees right now, it's kind of experimenting.
You're good with it?
It's working okay for you?
Working good, we've had one problem. Because, you know, they're not supposed to take them out of their sales. One person didn't understand that, but doesn't matter, things been good.
Cheryl, you good with it? I'll be my motion to approve.
Okay.
Moving second all in favor, raise your hand.
Well, you got out light today.
Thirty-one, discuss and take action on renewal of contract for legal research subscription for the Criminal District Attorney's Office.
Morning Quentin.
So we're ending up a conclusion of a three-year contract with Lexis, Nexus for our legal resource software. The rule has to be done by July first, which is why I'm here now. There is a price increase in that there, we can cover for the months of July, August, September, we can cover that increase with our already budgeted funds. There will be an increase the following year. A little less than eleven hundred dollars total increase, and the year after that would be less than eight hundred dollars. The year after that, I'm not sure, because if the contract falls in the middle of the fiscal year, so not totally sure of the increase, but it should be seven or eight hundred dollars. Mostly the person presenting it to you today, because the firm has to be the one that signs the contract, is to make sure you're okay with approving the budget later on to cover it. I'd say we'll, we won't need any additional money for the rest of this fiscal year.
You gonna put in budget request later?
I will.
Okay. I'll, I'll move to approve. Moving second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-two, discuss and take action on purchase of Motorola radios for our new EMS units as approved in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, budgeting the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-six cents.
Rachel's online.
These are the new toilets.
Hello. Are y'all able to hear me?
Yes.
So these, um, these radios are just gonna replace some of our older ones that are approaching their end of life and they're not gonna be able to be serviced soon, so these will be for our three newest ambulances that we got, and then our newest supervisor vehicle. Um, it was approved at budget time.
The money's where Patricia and projects are at. Okay. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moving same to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-three, just. They'll get thirty-three, discuss and take action on pay increase to EMS Assistant Chief position to reflect increase of three dollars an hour for a total of six thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Yes, so I'm getting ready to post, um, our Assistant Chief position and also our District Chief position that we have open. And I guess our Assistant Chief, I know we discussed it at budget time, um, giving that position the three dollars an hour raise as well. Um, I'm not, I don't remember if it just got missed or we decided not to do it. However, if I post these jobs as they are, my district chief or essentially a field supervisor is going to be making more than my Assistant Chief when they're maxed out. So I would just like to add that three dollars an hour pay increase to the Assistant Chief position.
Yeah, and he, he was a paramedic also, right, Rachel?
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't know how it got missed, but it did, and it uh, you know, I think we need to fix it, let's put it that way. So I'll make a motion to approve agenda item thirty-three.
Oh, is, is, I guess, is he doing a district chief is shift, right, Rachel?
I'm sorry.
Your district chief is a shift job, right?
Yes, sir, it's, um, it's like our middle management, so they, they fall underneath our Assistant Chief position. Um, so they're like a field supervisor.
And then Assistant Chief is just forty hours a week?
Yes, that's my number two position in my department.
When we look at the minimum pay, there's already a seven thousand dollar difference. You got seventy-six, nine, nine, nine for Assistant Chief and sixty-nine, nine, five, nine for EMS.
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the max. So as it is, I'll have one of my senior district chiefs will probably be making more than whoever I hire in at my Assistant Chief position currently.
As a new hire.
Yeah, we just overlooked, I mean, he was a paramedic also, and I don't know why it got left out, but it did.
I'll, I'll second your motion.
And a motion, uh, and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed?
Thank you.
For the. Thirty-four, discuss and take action on the purchase of lights for the storm shelter from budgeted funds. Larry?
Morning. Oh, this is, uh, this, this was approved in budget, I think, uh, seven thousand was allowed for it. Um, found them quite a bit less, this will convert the remaining storm shelter parking lot over to LEDs.
That'll be my motion.
Would do the work in-house.
I'll second that.
Moving same to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-five, discuss and take action on change order for additional mold remediation in county court at law.
So I had to put in a change order, uh, in the court's office. Missing the bid, the original bid over there, we had them come back by. This is the additional cost to have remediation rebuild done in the county court.
So this is the fifty-four fifty?
Yes, sir, the total of fifty, uh, twenty-five hundred for remediation, twenty-nine fifty for a rebuild.
Larry, this, this bunch is, I mean, you're overseeing this, and this bunch is doing a good job so far.
Uh, we've had a couple of problems, uh, we had, we had a problem with the rebuild in the, uh, in the courtroom. But I got the, uh, their project manager on site this morning, showed it to him, and he's gonna get it fixed. Court's gonna be happy with what I suggested, he's, he's, he's willing to do it, and everybody will be happy.
Been about a week or two ahead of schedule, so for a two-week job there, two, three days.
Be better to get them to do it while they're here.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we accept, uh, number thirty-five, not fifty. Fifty-four fifty.
I'll second.
Moving same to all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-six, discuss and take action on arts renewal. Amy?
Morning, Amy.
This is our annual, uh, renewal for the Affordable Care Act reporting and tracking services. That does this for us for free. It's the ten ninety-fives. We don't have to provide them to the employees anymore, but they still have to be reported to the IRS. So, um, I submit information to tax, they put the forms together and they submit them to us for free. Just need to get approval that y'all are great with us doing that.
Motion to approve agenda item thirty-six as presented.
Moving, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-seven, discuss and take action on supplemental insurance with Higginbottom Services.
We currently have Aflac as our vendor for the supplemental insurances for the employees. Cancer policies, accident, um, all the supplemental stuff. Um, we had some issues with them at renewal last year. Service hasn't been great this year. Um, I was contacted by another company that offers similar services. Um, so I have him here to do a little presentation for y'all, see if you're interested and we'll go from there.
Question, question before this, uh, if we change, what's gonna happen to our employees that have Aflac?
We, um, so we did this years ago when we had Colonial. You can keep those services. We just won't offer new. Um, so anything that you currently have, we'll still keep those. Any new policies would go forward with the new company if we decide to go with.
Yeah, we still fair up.
Yeah, yeah, they're still on there.
Orlando?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Hand out to where you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Espinoza. E S P I N O C A. Well, good morning. So I think, uh, I've met most of you. I was your tack representative, um, on the employee benefits side for six years. Um, so I moved over to Higginbottom. Um, so what we do, what I'm doing now is I'm a broker. So basically I be, I'm the middle man between you and the insurance carriers. Uh, try to help find you guys the best benefits that I can. Um, kind of similar to what I did at Tac, other than, you know, working for Tac, that was the benefits that I offer. Um, now we're able to kind of, where I'm at now, we're able to go out and search for the best benefits. So what you have in front of you is you have this template that is what we built. Um, it's called a, the Higginbottom Public Sector Governmental Benefits Co-op. Um, so Higginbottom is a very large, um, agency, uh, but specifically what I work for is I work for Higginbottom Public Sector and we only work with public sector entities. Uh, right now, the majority of our, uh, clientele is school districts. So we work with, um, over six hundred school districts currently, providing, you know, all kinds of, uh, benefit solutions for them. So, um, right now, my job is to help build the county and city side of it. Um, you know, with my experience with dealing with counties, um, kind of helping them build out what it looks like to work with counties, um, bringing in, you know, kind of my expert, expertise with working with all these different. Being able to provide you guys with, uh, you know, opportunities to provide better benefits, better service to your employees. Um, so that was the one thing that when I was at Tac, I kind of saw, you know, was it was the sup, the supplemental side that was kind of lacking in service. So the Aflac Colonials, um, you know, you get a local guy that, you know, is there, has a one, two-person shop, maybe. Service isn't always great, you know, um, can't always get someone on the phone. Um, so what we do is we have, um, and you'll see on here on this little, uh, postcard that you'll see, you'll see that we provide a lot of different services. So on top of being able to provide you guys better benefits to your employees, um, at a lower cost, what we're able to do is we're able to bring in high-level service to your employees. So you get an account manager, that account manager will work with you and work with, uh, uh, HR to make sure that, you know, your, your questions are answered. On top of that, you also get a, um, your employees will have access to a, a call service, a, a call center that is Higginbottom employees. So if they have a question, they want to s- submit a claim, they have questions about their benefits, they can call that number directly and it's one of our employees and then that employee will help them walk them through whatever, uh, issues they're having. Okay? Um, we also have, um, our own software. So we have our own proprietary, you know, app that they can enroll in their benefits on the app. Um, they can log on the computer, they can do that. Um, they can, they, on that app, they have access to everything that they have already, um, through us. So let's say in the future, like I don't, I don't remember what I signed up for. They can pull up the app on their phone and they can see exactly what their benefits are. Um, with that, we also, for open enrollment, as Amy was mentioning, we can send out enrollers that'll come out and help enroll employees into our, um, programs that we set forward for you. Um, so they'll come out, they'll explain it to the employees, walk them through it, help them sign up if they need it. Or if they're self-sufficient and they don't need any help, they can go on the app and they can go sign up for their benefits on their own. And so either way, we can help with that. Um, we also have a, uh, billing help as well. So the way our billing works is any, uh, products that you have through Higginbottom Public Sector, um, what we'll do is we will reconcile those bills that we receive with whatever's in our, in our system. That's the system of record. So we will reconcile it. We will send you the discrepancies report. And what we will do is instead of, let's say, if you look at this, you'll see that there's, um, names of the companies. There's a bunch of different companies or a bunch of these different benefits. Um, but what we do is we take all of those invoices, instead of you receiving ten different invoices, we receive them, we reconcile them, we send you the discrepancies and then we will send you one invoice from us. You send us the payment and we will send those payments out to the different. That way you guys don't have to deal with all of the headaches of the billing and figuring out what money goes where. So we can take some of that administrative burden off of your, um, HR team, your billing team that would handle that. On top of that, I mean, we just, uh, we pride ourselves in being able to offer the service that your employees need. You know, sometimes, you know, y- your employees have questions that, you know, maybe your HR team can't, you know, can't answer. They're great, but they have a lot of stuff on their plate. And so having a full team on our side that's dedicated to helping them, um, or even let's say enrollment time, you know, a lot of times, you know, I, I came to open enrollment a long time soon with a lot of different counties. And I'd have, you know, a road guy there who didn't really know what was going on with the benefits, didn't know how to make those decisions. So they wanted to go home to their wife and ask their wife questions and make sure that their wife was, you know, aware of what was going on, right? So in that situation, they can call, um, once they get home and they can have their spouse on the phone and then have someone from our team walk them through the benefits and answer all those questions and help them enroll. So the biggest thing that we're offering is the service, being able to help your employees, um, navigate, one, bringing them better benefits at a lower cost. But then two, being able to actually help them understand it, educate them on it, um, and help them understand what they have. Um, it's great to be able to offer better benefits, but if they don't understand them, it doesn't really do a whole lot of good. So, um, those are the things that we focus on is really helping your employees, um, navigate through the benefits.
If we have an employee that signs up for this and works for us for six, eight years and decides to go on somewhere else, does, can they pay this and keep this policy or does it terminate, employee, employment terminates?
Yes, so most poli, most policies are portable. Um, so you're able to take it with you. Um, you just have to go through the carrier at that time to kind of make that portable. Um, and our, and our employees can help them figure out how to do that as well.
Will we get the same people to come talk to the, our people? I know last year we had a problem every week, every few days, we had somebody different coming in the door, talking to our employees. We get the same.
The same enrollers?
Yeah.
Um, that is where I don't know, because I know we work with a, um.
I think that's important for us and Amy and our people, they're not dealing with a new face every time they come in here.
Yeah, um, so you definitely would have an account manager that would be the same person, kind of, you know, similar role to what I did at Tac. You'd have that. You'd have myself. I would be here to make sure that everything's going well. Um, we can, it probably would be similar people because they're spread out through the state. So it would probably be the same, like, team that, you know, is close to you guys. Um, so I can't guarantee it, but I can definitely, you know, work with our team to make sure that.
But you'll, you'll be our contact.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Yes, I want to get y'alls, your feedback and see if it, if you thought that it would be a good move, um, or to stay with Aflac. Um, I haven't been happy with the service, so I'm willing to give somebody else a chance and if not, I'll be back next year, the new company. Um, but yes, so those are some of the questions that, that I still have is, is who would do our enrolling? Um, and then just some of the reporting that we get. When we have two different options, whether we go with the, the co-op pricing or if they go out for bid. But we have to first get the approval before we can figure out which option that we were gonna take. So that's why I wanted to bring that today since we need to get going with our open enrollment period.
And that was my question. And we're gonna wait to do, if approved, we'll wait and roll this all into our normal open enrollment period?
Yes, which will be in a few weeks. Cause our new, our new plan will start in, or February, July first. So they usually come out May and June and do all of the enrollment.
Yeah, so we're working on a shorter timeline. So the benefits co-ops, what it is, is it's, uh, a group, groups, different groups coming together. Um, what we did was we went to our carriers and we said, hey, we had three, four, five groups or whatever, um, with X number of lives. Can you give us set rates based off of that? So instead of having to go out to, to bid for these services, we've already built this out based off of X number of enrolled lives. So these rates are, you're part of a co, of a cooperative, you're part of other groups that are, I think right now in this co-op, we have three groups that are in, that are in, that are in it. This is the one we're trying to build up to make sure that, you know, we have ten co-ops on the education side. So we have ten co-ops throughout the, the rest, you know, geor- geographically throughout the state, um, for school districts. This one is the first one that we've built out specifically for governmental entities. So this will be counties, cities, appraisal districts, ESDs is our goal. So, um, we're trying to build this up. Um, this is, uh, these rates are guaranteed. You'll see that, um, some of them are guaranteed through twenty twenty-seven rates. Um, on the voluntary life, you'll get, um, up to two hundred thousand dollars guaranteed issue. So employees can sign up for two hundred thousand extra, um, life insurance with no questions asked. Um, there is dental and vision in here as well, which I do know that you guys have through Tac. Um, so this, those are the two and, um, the EAP that are optional. You don't have to offer those as we know that, you know, Tac's done a great job for you guys. So if you guys want to keep those with Tac, then you can. And you can join the, the co-op and these, we could make this effective July, July first. We can make these plans effective July first and then come out, do enrollment for you guys, um, and move forward. If you guys wanted to align that date with your other benefits, we could do a short plan year and just kind of renew on ten one. That way all of the benefits are, you know, effective at the same day. Completely up to you guys how you want to handle that, but, um, we can work with you guys and make sure that, you know, we, we can meet you where you want to be and kind of make things easier for you.
It's like, I got a couple of questions. So I mean, I'm assuming there's quite a few organizations out there that, that do this. So, so have we, did we do an RFP for this or have we thought about doing an RFP for this? It seems silly that we have three, we have two getting ready to go to three of them.
Um, we haven't only because it's a supplemental program. Um, and so I just haven't done an RFP for it.
And I, I may not be able to do it this year because it's pretty short notice. But I, I would almost rather do an RFP and look at our colonial people, look at our Aflac people, look at these people. And part of the RFP would be, be like, hey, these, if these people are interested, just to bring them over, continue service, you know, with, and, and get a proposal that gets that. So, um, I doubt we have time to do it this year, but it seems me on this big of a financial obligation and commitment that we would, I know I've kind of talked about this for a couple of years with you back to. So I'd like to see it happen as far as that goes.
Yeah, th- this is the employees insurance, right? I mean, county doesn't pay any of this.
Correct.
So. We kind of manage it.
We kind of manage.
We do manage.
Typically, I mean, we all, didn't it?
Yeah.
Would, would we have to do an RFP, Miss Cheryl, or not? I wouldn't think so because it's not a.
Well, we're leaving the other one because they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
So we're gonna tell those people that Aflac is going away, but you can keep using them if you want to on the side.
Continuing servicing through the customer service. They'll continue servicing all their plans, helping them with claims. Um, if we went with them, we just wouldn't offer any new claims and any new policies to them. Um, cause our agent is also the district manager and feel, so he's got three different titles and he doesn't respond in any level to me.
Those titles.
I will say, just to kind of, you know, compare the plans, you know, we, when we built these co-ops, we kind of went off of Aflac, um, their, their plans and their rates. Uh, so just for an example here, um, our accident plan, um, is seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, um, a month for employee only. Um, that plan with Aflac is about thirty dollars a month. But we're talking about significant savings through the co-op for employees on the money that they spend out of their own pockets. And that's the biggest thing that, you know, we're able to provide because we're not captive to any one carrier. So we're able to shop it out and we're able to find you the best deals at the best, the best benefits at the best deals.
Yeah.
But, but are they locked in for us?
Yeah.
Cause all the Aflac stuff is locked in.
Yeah, so these rates, um, they, you know, a lot of these have, uh, guaranteed through, so they're not locked in forever. Um, but they are, you know, we do have long-term rate guarantees. And what's gonna happen is this co-op is going to grow. So right now it was three groups at six hundred lives. Adding you guys would be four groups with, you know, three hundred more employees, four hundred more employees. So that number is gonna grow. So the larger this co-op goes, the more purchasing power we have. So these rates can go down in the future with, you know, better, you know, more, more groups involved, more labs involved. So, um, we'll shop it out once we come out. Um, so we will administer this co-op. The co-op will have a board of directors that will be made up of its, um, of its members. Um, so we will, you know, appoint people from each, you know, group that's, um, in that co-op to, you know, preside, oh, oh, proceed over this co-op. But we will be, you know, taking it out to bid whenever these rates are no longer guaranteed. And chances are we'll be able to get better rates because we'll have a larger, um, population of that.
So are you just Texas-based?
So we are, we, we are out of Texas. So we've expanded into other states, but Texas is our home. Um, our headquarters is, is in Fort Worth. Um, our office is in Richardson. Um, but yeah, we've, I mean, Texas is our, is our biggest footprint that started.
What about, Miss Amy? Is the move we need to make? I'm looking at you. You know way more than I do about this.
I think from, from service-wise, I'm interested in it. Um, I haven't looked at all of the policies and compared all of them. Um, and it's not as simple as looking at, oh, I have this life policy and I have this. Because some of them with Aflac, you can get riders, you can get extra people added on. So it, it's gonna be very hard to look at it and say, hey, a life policy is fourteen dollars and this one is thirteen dollars because there's a lot of variables with it. Um, but I think all the plans offer a lot of the similar things. And to me, service is, is a big piece that we're missing right now. Um.
So basically the service that we're getting from them.
Yes.
Is what the issue really is.
Yes. I contacted them February twenty-fourth, asking, hey, I know it's a little bit early, but what are our plans for open enrollment? And I haven't heard back to today still. Um, so, um.
Enough for me.
Willing to give them a chance and see, um, if not, I'll be back here next year.
Yeah, and we have, we have different teams, uh, and we're, we're a pretty well-oiled machine in terms of how we, how we work. So not only do you have a service team, you also have an implementation team. So what'll happen is we have an entire team that's working with you on making sure that we're putting this in place. Um, we have a sales support team that helps us when we go out to bid. So let's say next year you guys, you know, want to kind of take this apart and go out to bid on your own. We have an entire team that handles the RFP, negotiates with our carriers and all that kind of stuff. And then you have your accounting, obviously helps to answer all those questions. Um, and then the service team that helps answer your employees' questions. So there's, there's a lot of different layers that goes into it that helps you guys help your employees.
So, so the people that are on Aflac now, and what happens to them? Do we keep, like, like Danny said, we're still paying colonial people? Do we still keep paying Aflac?
Leave them on that we're still payroll.
Still gonna be dealing with the service level identical with them.
Unless you want to often change companies.
See, and that, well, if you change companies.
Change companies, you still got employees that, yeah, that are involved.
You have a few people.
I mean, I have.
I can't get them to tell me when they're gonna come in and see our employees and do our math openly. Um, and I'm emailing two or three times a month with, hey, this is a discrepancy on this or so-and-so left, they want to add this. Um, I can't get it through my agent level. I'm having to go straight to corporate and deal with someone there. Then every time it's a different person.
And. But that's not, I was like, but that's, but that's not gonna change.
Correct.
We have three hundred people on, two hundred people on Aflac right now that say, I like my Aflac, you know.
Um, we just won't, um, be adding new to that. And then if some of those would like to move over, they're I, I'm just trying something.
And that, and that's why I fall back to, I think, I don't, I don't like piecing things in. I, I think to me it's, and whether, I mean, if this is the Band-Aid for a year that have opportunity to do it. But I think we, we, we RFP thing and we put all that out there. We've got two hundred something people. These are their policies. This is colonial. This is Aflac. This is Higginbottom. You're gonna take all of these customers and just as a county, you just tell them, this is what we have.
There's some, and I'm not sure with this. I know there's some that have pre-existing conditions. Let's say they have a cancer policy. They've already had cancer, so they can't be picked up at a new place. So they're kind of stuck where they're at. Um, so I would hate to force them to go somewhere else if y'all aren't able to pick them up.
What are the RFP? Will you take our pre-existing condition patients?
So I will say that one, and specifically to the cancer plan, um, so our cancer plan is through Chubb. So Chubb, I'm, I'm not sure if you guys have heard of Chubb, but Chubb is primarily. So Chubb, I'm, I'm not sure if you guys have heard of Chubb, but Chubb is primarily on the property casualty side. They are, you know, multimillion dollar mansion, you know, insurers. Uh, but they built this cancer plan specifically for Higginbotham. Um, one of the neat features about the cancer plan is that, let's say someone right now is going through cancer treatments and is getting paid out on their Aflac plan. Normally, no, no carrier would take that on, right? Chubb will actually take that, uh, person that's already getting treatments and is already getting paid out. They will roll that person in and they will take over those, those payments for that person. Um, so that, that's what, so because we're such a large brokerage, these carriers give us benefits that they don't give other brokers out there. Um, so we've built this out to be basically, hopefully better than what the employees have at a lower cost because these carriers want to compete with the Aflacs that have the name recognition. So they're giving us, they're building in these different benefits that are included in these rates at a lower cost. And honestly, I mean, our goal would be to show the employees how our plan is equal or better to what, than what they currently have and at a lower cost to them. And you're right. I mean, I definitely would agree that if you, you want to, you want to offer one, right? You want to offer one solution. You want to say, we as the court, we as H R, we've decided this is the best option for X, Y, and Z, and this is what we're putting for it. So, I mean, I totally respect that, totally understand that because I agree.
And that's the one part of like about N R F P is that, um, no offense, but I've known you for like three hundred seconds now. That's it. So I don't know two weeks from now where you're going to be. I mean, you, you know, with this and with that, I don't know. In an R F P, we've got, you know, we've got twenty-five years. We have these kind of assets. We have this, we have that. And those kind of things make me feel better, you know, as far as those kind of things. So, I mean, I'm, I'm good to go for a year, but I think next January or something like that, when you talk seriously about consolidating.
We could always, so this year they could keep that if they want it next year. Give them a, a year to research and all that as well. If we stay with this company, then you have to go with, with the new.
The new stuff.
How many, how many people do we, I know it's going to put you on the spot. Like the old colonial plan.
Old colonial, we've got less than ten.
Okay.
Um, but they love it.
Well.
One of those ten loves.
And then Aflac, we've got probably under fifty.
Hundred and fifty.
Okay. Uh, okay, I, I, I'm just.
What do you got? I don't know. What's that? What do you got, Andy?
You guys correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the people that have a plan where their rates would be basically life insurance. A lot of the other plans are basically their end type plans, like I switched plans because it will affect my rate. Well, that's. They will be the life insurance, I think.
That's not so true, Andy, because a lot of these rates, I, I didn't get on Aflac forever, but them rates are locked down.
Yeah.
You, you're not going to honor their rates. I already know you're not.
You know? And I'll tell you, I mean.
And, and I mean, no.
They're going to change, they're going to change for sure. Um, but when you're looking at an accident plan that's thirty dollars versus seven dollars, even if you get a ten percent increase in three years, I mean, it's still going to be twenty dollars less than what the current Aflac plan is. And, and, you know, the whole goal is that our, our job is to look out for this co-op for our clients. So when we, if rates do go up, we take them out to bid and then we try to get them back to where they were. So a lot of our co-ops that we've built for the school districts, those rates have stayed pretty stagnant, you know, for twenty plus years.
I'm not against trying it. Don't get me wrong. I mean, we, we, we take a little time and, and, but, you know.
If they mess up, Aflac might do good again.
Well, yeah, well, and, and I know Amy's had trouble with them for years now, you know, on, on the Aflac side. Their, their customer services stinks. Um, but you've got a hundred and fifty people that are locked into this thing, you know, that, that stand something to lose. I'd like to know what to, you know?
And, and customer service is huge. Uh, some of the Aflac stuff, I bought some, uh, tried to go and get the reimbursement for it. It's like, okay, bring me the doctor's note. Okay. Now go bring me your work note. Now go bring me this, then go bring me that. Had more time invested in chasing it. I did ever get the, whatever the money. So, and that's my question. How is that going to be different? Or, or what's better for the, for the end user, which is our employees?
Yeah. Um, great question. So, uh, the difference is we're the middleman, right? We are your broker. We are not the insurance carrier. So whereas Aflac is the carrier, right? They're the, they're the ones that are paying out. They're going to try to make you jump through hoops to not pay out, right? That's just kind of how some insurance works. Our job is to help your employees because we work for you. You are our client. We are in between you and the carrier. So then when your employee calls Higginbotham, our customer service person is going to call. They're going to get all the information that they need. They're going to say, hey, these are all the things that we need. And then they're going to come back to your employee and say, this is what we need in order to file this claim, right? Because their job is to help your employee, not to help out the insurance company. That's why, just same way you probably have an agent on your auto insurance, home insurance, right? They help you there. I mean, a lot of times not employed by the insurance company. They're out there, you know, looking for, same thing here, you know, we, we work for you guys. So our, our customer service, when they call, if they call, let's say, okay, so Lincoln, let's say they call Lincoln, they might get the same thing as what they get with Aflac. But if they call Higginbotham, Plumbus Sector, they're going to get our employees. And our employees are there designed specifically to help your employees and figure out how to make it as easy as possible for them to utilize the benefits that they have.
You use the word Chubb earlier, and that's under the voluntary life and A D P. Um, cancer is, that's under there too. Now you're telling me that if you have pre-existing cancer, you can join this for sixteen ninety-two a month and they're gonna, they're gonna let you in, even though you're.
So the pre-existing is something that I'll have to, I know they are in a cancer claim. Um, I, I'm, I'm almost positive that yes, they will do it because it's a special spec- specifically designed for us to be able to come in and offer this to employees. Um, so it is, it is a different policy than what you'll see with Aflac and with Colonial and with all these other carriers because they built this specifically for us.
Try for a year?
Just try for one year. Like I say, Amy's not happy, she'll be back and you'll be out.
Hey, I.
I got, I got a motion from Commissioner White.
That's my motion. Come on, Bill.
All right, I'll second him. But I'm, but in January, we're going shopping.
Absolutely.
Yeah, second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Amy, are you going to get us something that compares their rates to Aflac?
You got my number?
Or will it really make, not make any difference?
I can, I can look at them. Like I said, some of them are going to be hard to tell.
Yeah.
Um, because that's, I think, was single parent, like, so Aflac offers, um, like a policy, they offer same, like, ba- basically, and they call it something different. Um, it would be employee, employee and child, spouse, uh, the different levels. So I'll have to break it down and really compare those and see. And I'll take my policy, but I have a couple of them, um, and look at them and see, um, you know, if they have riders, if they don't have riders.
Because the, the cancer was, the cancer was a rider on some of that stuff with Aflac, right?
Some of them you get just a straight cancer policy, but then you can add little P, like fifty cents to a dollar or two, and it gives you extra layers of coverage. So that's what I haven't broke all the way down yet to compare that baseline price.
Whatever you're going to bring out, or your people are going to bring out, try to get that to us by a couple of weeks, at least a week before you come out, the the elderly, and I'm just going to say it, the elderly employees I got, they, they want to look at it, they want to read it. And then when you get there, ask questions, not show it in a face and say, do you want to sign up?
Yes. We, we, we do resource guides, benefit guides, same way the TAC does. Um, so we have a booklet that has all the benefits in it. It goes through everything. So you just let us know when you need it by, we'll get it to you. And then that way they can have them whenever, um, already have, you know, have them for a little bit before we come in to do it.
Um, and I'd like to also see if maybe you could do, um, a couple of presentations ahead of time, like say the end of, um, or middle of May, um, do a couple of presentations. That way it gives people time they can come to hear the presentation, ask questions, before you can actually come out and do the, the renewal or the.
Our, our job is to provide you with, with whatever you need. Right? Our, we are here to do that. So if you need to come out, do presentations, whatever you need, that's what we're here for.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Right. Thirty-eight, discuss and take action on imposed tariffs for contract C two, three, six, zero, dash, two, five, dash, zero, one, one. Generator installation for three locations in Walker County, which will include an increase in total of contract. Ms. Cheryl?
Morning. So the, uh, contractor, McCafferty, like for the installation of those, uh, three generators at, um, our station was at fifty-two and seventy-three, and then, uh.
Where in the city?
Um, McCafferty has come back and said that Kohler, which is the generator, has, um, uh, imposed tariffs uh, on the generators that they had not anticipated when they bid. And, uh, stating that it was going to be an increase uh, for that, for the installation, uh, to him of two thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars.
For general?
Uh, for all three.
Three.
It was all three. It's, uh, actually seven hundred and forty-one dollars per generator. He did break that out. However, he hasn't provided me, uh, with the, the request or the bill from Kohler stating that the tariffs were imposed on him. After I've been doing some research on when the tariffs actually took place, um, he was awarded the contract on, um, February, uh, tenth. And, um, what I can find, um, off of the website, uh, uh, the increase, um, Kohler uh, stated that they would increase on February the first a one to four percent. And then on, uh, March the twenty-second, they had another increase of four to eight percent. But that didn't fall. I mean, again, we awarded it on February the tenth. Uh, not quite sure when the tariffs took effect because of course President, he issued them and then rescinded and issued again. Uh, the best I can come out, uh, was the latest, uh, was March the twelfth, uh, but definitely on, uh, April third. So again, uh, McCafferty hasn't provided me with the information that I need, uh, to actually ask for any.
And we didn't pay anything on these generators. One's E S D one, one E S D two, and then the city of New Waverly, they picked up all the added fees. So I don't know why we're.
Well, because they're past three.
And, and no, I get it.
But.
But this is to be a discussion we need to have with them.
Yeah.
If they're willing to pay it.
Yeah.
So I'm going to tell Gerald to, let's see if McCafferty can give you those receipts where he had to pay them and then reach out to the three entities, see if they're willing to pay those fees. If they have proof of that we got charged that. And then come back to court.
That worked.
Yeah.
Yep, we're going to pass on thirty-eight.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl.
Thirty-nine, discuss and take action to retain outside counsel for a civil lawsuit. We'll go into executive session under five, five, one point oh seven one.
Can we, can we push that to the end? So at least, I think we're going to be here for a bit on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine to the end. Go to number forty, discuss and take action on the purchase of two carports for precinct three in the amount not to exceed seven dollars to be paid for budget fund. You just wanted to get to yours.
And now we're here. I'm making a motion to approve agenda item number forty. I'll be paying for it on my own budget.
Second. Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries forty-one. Discuss, take action to purchase John Deere three-ten J backhoe serial number, there you go, from city of New Waverly for Roden Bridge Four from Roden Bridge Funds in the amount of twenty thousand. Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand.
Nice back.
Motion carries. All right, number forty-two, public hearing concerning plat number twenty, twenty-five, dash, zero, zero, one, replata lots, seven block two, section one of Walnut Creek subdivision. Time is ten oh one. Anyone here to speak upon that? All right, Andrew?
It's a division of, of a lot of two people.
Scroll it. Let's see, scroll it down.
The picture.
The picture.
A bit more. There you go.
It was seven.
Why did this come before? So I, I didn't.
It's a reply. Oh, just.
It's a lot of existing law.
It's not spunky on. Looked like to me. So it's not very interesting. It's a five block and it's a reply.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really, uh, just your question.
Yeah, I don't have any question.
Time is ten oh two, public hearing is closed. Forty-three, discuss and take action on plat number twenty, twenty-five, dash, zero, zero, one, replata lot, seven block two, section one of Walnut Creek subdivision.
For approved agenda item forty-three, second.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries forty-four, public hearing concerning plat number twenty, twenty-five, dash, zero, zero, five, replata track one of two, so, so Kia, three point nine, seven, eight acre track. Uh, time is ten oh two. Anyone here to speak upon that? Andy?
Those are, are variants that came before. Currently shaped like the, the kind of pool, one, six, or seven hour. This area is smaller, going to require by the cove. Previous ranch was requested. It's coming back for Commissioner's Board. Part of the previous variants. Nothing, no additional branches of our list.
Good. Time is ten oh three, public hearing is closed. Number forty-five, discuss and take action on plat number twenty, twenty-five, dash, zero, zero, five, replata track one of the two, three point nine, seven, eight acre track.
That's yours. That you run. You need anything on it, Andy? You're good with it? I make a motion to approve agenda item forty-five as presented.
I'll second that.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty-six, public hearing concerning amendments to the Walker County subdivision, either one of them. They both did. Public hearing concerning amendments to the Walker County subdivision regulations under chapter two thirty-two of the Texas Local Government Code. Time is ten oh four.
So, um, I'll do the draft, the, the. All of those are projected to, I'm going to show you. Talk about what they want to add or change. Um, I've made the laws here from Wild Associates. A lot of the changes, attention changes. Engineering section. Specifically, the big one is, we talked about several times, we're in the past, just talking about having a concrete standard for a ditch. Have definitely, nothing else. Uh, so we, we, we included in this draft a concrete standard in addition to curb gutter cross-section, asphalt standard that we already have. Of course, we could have some discussion about how they want to apply those standards, but they're all, they're all.
Yeah, let's just go straight into that one. Now I'm, I'm going to give you my thoughts and you know, probably don't like it, but that's okay. I don't really care. Uh, we've got to do something to protect the county and the citizens of Walker County with all the roads that we're taking. And, and my, my view of it basically is to go with concrete and do away with the asphalt standards. And, and it's going to be a long term for the county, for people coming in behind us. When none of us is sitting up here, well, we've got spoken, we've been sitting here a while, you know, but I don't plan on sitting that long with y'all, so. But the reality of it is, I mean, going concrete would, would extend the life of those roads from probably what, twenty years to maybe forty to fifty years.
Yeah.
And so I think it's the thing to do, honest to do.
I'm, I'm halfway there with.
Well, let's, let's go a little further before you, before you make your mind up. Uh, e- even, even with the private subdivisions, I think we're going to go with concrete. I mean, that protects the citizens that buy in there. They won't have deteriorating roads that didn't get fixed. And if those folks ever want to bring it back for acceptance at the county, then they built it to a standard that you could take. Basically. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm on board with it. And I've been on board with it for a while.
Yeah.
Be a one.
You know, and, and basically, you know, I mean, our standards will be concrete and that would be it. So that's just where I'm at on it, but I'll shut up and let y'all go because that's where I'm going to be.
I don't know if the court needs this reminder, but I'll remind the court. Currently, we have a concrete, uh, perfectly all break, kind of freaking urban streets, curb gutter streets.
Yeah.
Uh, the rural streets currently only have a asphalt standard for a ditch. We have had one developer apply variants to allow concrete of the ditch road that's been built. Um, but we didn't have a standard. So once you're looking at a potential added standard, that's not, that language is not in here, but that language. That's not, that language is not in here, but that language can be built. Okay, let's, let's, you know, we're, we're ordering me to do that, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, like I say, I mean, that's where I'm at. I'm gonna kind of wait and see what these guys think. That may affect some of the stuff that you're doing here.
Yeah, I, I like the, I like the concrete and I hadn't really thought about the second part that you talked about as far as them coming later. But to me it was, I'm liking the concrete for any road that they want to be considered for public maintenance, to bring to the county and say, hey, we're building this, we're gonna give it to y'all. We like, not a problem. It's concrete based on our new standard. Giving a developer an option to, um, build a private road with, with a two-inch hot mix, kind of keeps us, there's still an option that kind of keeps them like, in like city Huntsville standards, if they want to build one of those. And it, to me, it keeps it awful, because we're not gonna take a road later. I pretty much guarantee you that, but.
We're not always gonna sit up here though, Bill. You know.
So hold that thought, Bill. Just to be, just for clarity's sake, you guys are saying private road, you mean a road that's being proposed to be privately maintained?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about. Yes. I was gonna talk about your definition here.
We have right now, you'd have to get a variance just to do that.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Stephanie, did, did you get time to do the cost scenarios between the hot mix and the concrete?
We pulled some recent bid prices and you're looking at about a thirty to thirty-five percent increase from asphalt to concrete for the same pavement.
So we, we had this.
And it can, that could vary.
Yeah.
Depending on the, depending on, you know.
We also had this discussion last week, you know, numbers are funny. So if somebody comes to you and says twenty-five percent, what they're, what they may be talking about is if you were building concrete, it may be a twenty-five percent decrease of that number to go to asphalt. But if you're moving from asphalt up to concrete, then that's.
Yeah. And it's a significant number, you know, a million dollar road is now one million, four-hundred-thousand dollar worth. If you say go to concrete, that, that's a significant number. That's what I'm saying.
But if you have guaranteed or pretty well guaranteed twice the longevity of that room, is it not worth?
Yeah, and to me, that's what I would put in the developer's head. I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it unbuildable here. Um, and I like that. I love the idea of concrete. I would hope that they would say, let's come do concrete. But a smaller developer might say, yeah, I just, I can't afford that, you know, can I do two-inch asphalt? And you're like, yeah, you can do two-inch asphalt, but you're gonna own it. It's yours from now going forward. You know, giving them a, a fallback parade, publicly road, privately maintained, using that.
Well, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have any more of your road off of, uh, I'm trying not to call the name of it, but you know which one I'm referring to. They've been up here.
Yeah.
If you make them go to the standards, this protects the people that's buying the land also.
Yeah.
And for many, many, many years, I mean, most of us probably won't even be alive.
If you're gonna tell them, so if you're gonna tell them every road has to be concrete, that you're pretty much telling them every road you build, we're gonna take.
I would be fine with that if you guaranteed the forty-something plus year.
I'd be happy with taking like half as many roads.
Well, but, but so, and, and I've used this scenario already once before, uh, cowards country, fifty years old probably. And I have not spent, I mean, I don't know, I'd have to go back and get with Andy and see how long we've had it in, in our procession. But fifteen plus, I would say, and, and I have spent zero.
Yeah, and it's still in good shape.
It's still in great shape.
But you still mow it, mow the right.
I don't know. I don't mow it. But they mow it.
Right, but, but you, and if a tree falls across it, you gotta go get the tree.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
Like that's, I mean, that's the part you take, you know, with that, it comes with it. It's not just the potholes, it's the responsibility of the right of way from fence to fence.
Well, I mean, you gotta do that either way, the asphalt or concrete.
That, that's minimal.
Not on private, not if they, not if you tell them, I'll take a public road, it's concrete. If you wanna, if you wanna do hot mix, you, you're gonna own it. You'll be responsible for it. So they would have, because you're gonna do bar ditches, you're gonna cover it, you're gonna do trees, you're gonna do flooding, you're gonna, all that stuff is yours now, not just the road.
But that's the minimal part of it, in my opinion. You, you know, if, if, if it is built right from the get-go, you know, uh, you're not gonna have maintenance on it to speak of, unless something drastic happens, you know, uh.
But it's gonna have a bar ditch in.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, but.
So, you know. I mean, they still have the option of saying, no, I'll go ahead and do the forty percent and I'll, I still want it to be private or whatever there. But I just, to me, it's a, it gives them, it gives them a tool and I'd, I'd be, and I mean, I'm, you know, I just think it's a, a good way to keep a reasonable bill for what maybe, you know, what might price a subdivision out. By just saying, go come on and build it, but you get to own it, you know, but that's what, just what everybody else around us is doing.
Hey, we're trying to make it where the people coming in behind us will have some roads left.
Absolutely. That's why I don't think we can accept every single one of them.
Yeah, I mean, either that, either that or just would accept them.
We can't sit here and pick and choose either, just because, you know, Brandon's got one down there with a thousand in it and he's got one with ten. You know, you, you don't pick the one that.
Right, so you tell them, you build your road six inches of concrete, according to our new standard, we'll take that one. You build it out of two-inch asphalt, don't even bring it, we're not gonna consider it. That's you going out from now on.
Yeah, and, and that works until, I, I mean, I didn't ever think about this either. Me and Andy have had the conversation about splitting differences as far as private or, or going to concrete, you know. This would, this would definitely fix that problem.
Well, you would own, once again, you would own the bar ditch maintenance, the crack ceiling maintenance, the tree maintenance, the mowing right of ways. You would, you, you're gonna own that.
But if you ain't gonna work on the roads, you got time to do all that.
It's a whole lot easier if you're not working on the roads, you know.
So I'm not, I'm not opposed to this.
I'm definitely not opposed to it. I mean, I really think it's a, and it's, are they gonna like it? The developers? No, they're not gonna like it. But we gotta look after the citizens in the county too.
Well, and, and, you know, if you get twenty years down the road, you know, I mean, we all know, we've all had private roads. We have these people coming at us all the time, you know, wanting us to take in these roads if it's, if it gets to be enough people, I ain't saying I would give in, but there is future courts that might give in. And then you have taken that impact on, on to the taxpayer again.
Yeah, that, that will happen with the growth that's coming. You know, all it's gonna take is you put somebody up here and he's out there campaigning in them private subdivision that you're talking about. And it'll be enough of them to put him in office or her, whoever it happens to be.
Might be.
And then you convince three more there in the county system.
And this don't have to be unanimous. I mean, I can, I can.
It don't have to be unanimous. I'm just trying to listen if I got that third vote.
You know, you ain't got it right here.
I'm talking, just see where I'm at.
So, so just to be clear, like, just for the group, some of what you guys are talking about is subdivision regulations related. Some of what you guys are talking about is acceptance of a road into public maintenance. There was some small amount of discussion in the subdivision policy about the acceptance and the vote maintenance.
Yeah.
What you guys accept into vote maintenance is a separate decision. It's outside of the bounds of subdivision policy. So, um, just, you know, just clarifying there, there.
We're not deciding.
Court has a separate policy about what's taking the maintenance outside of this. We do point toward, you know, at least getting the roads substantially completed in accordance with the subdivision regulations right now. So that, and, and typically no one approaches the court for maintenance until they've at least met that bar. But, uh, right now, there is no, there would be other changes that would need to be made if you wanted to put something in the regulation, in the subdivision regulations, not in the what went on except for county maintenance regulations, uh, pointing to a private road standard because, privately maintained road standard or proposed privately, because right now we don't have a privately maintained road standard percent. It's not very intelligent.
Okay. So I like the fact that it's in there. I like the fact that the cross-section's in there. Somebody decides to build a concrete road, now we got a picture we complain without them having to bring us one or rescue them one. So I'm cool with that part of it. And we, I think we do need to talk about what you're talking about. I guess time to get you off the side.
That sounds a ton. What's the drawbacks from not doing? I mean, honestly, uh, now, now's the time for everybody to pick it up.
So, maybe I got to Houston or H G C at least once, if not several times a month. Worst roads that I've dropped down are the concrete roads. And, um, and the stock freeways with text top money, but that, that's surface streets, they're, they're terrible. What concerns me is, yes, you'll get thirty, forty years out of them. Hopefully, as the, the, the parent, we talked about setting the next set of commissioners and judge up here, but for failure, you go to repairing those concrete roads in thirty-four years. I think there's a, there's gonna be a problem because it's, it's a totally different, it's more labor intensive, it's more this, it's more that. You can't close it, you, you can't do like you can asphalt. You go out there on a, on a, on a a road, particular road, you grind it up, put traffic on it. When you're trying to do repairs on concrete, you're taking out sections and now you've got a section that you can't drive on until, so you gotta have the road closed if you do it that way. Uh, maintenance-wise, you're, you're, you're just gonna have, it's gonna be tough on the next set of whoever has to fix that. The other thing I want to bring up is, uh, and it's a concern of mine, may not be anybody else's, but when you start looking at, at, at increasing that million-dollar road to a million-four, your lot size is fixing to start shrinking.
They're already there, Brandon.
But, you know, you're gonna get, you're, you're, you're gonna get away from having these three to five acre subdivisions and you're gonna go to having all eighty-foot wide lots. That's my biggest concern on. You're, you're, you're gonna create, because that road now is a million-four instead of a million. Well, he, he, the developer's got to sell, uh, uh, lots of little lots. And I know we're at eighty and we're probably gonna be in court over eighty at some point, but, um, this concrete's gonna cut out your three to five acre subdivisions.
Yeah, I've already, I've heard that from probably the sources that you've heard it from. Will it stop developers in this county? No, it will not stop them whatsoever. They'll, they'll pass it on to the, the, the people that actually buy the lots.
Well, and going back to the, the, the maintenance versus concrete versus asphalt, you're talking about a patch in the end, either way. I mean, you go back, you're saying, yeah, you can go out there and grind it up. That is our whole biggest problem right now. Is now, you know, e- even us, a- as, as the precincts, don't spend the time trying to build these roads back like they ought to.
Absolutely.
It took me eight years to save up enough money to do a two-inch overlay on an existing asphalt road.
I did the same thing.
And, 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 and I can't, I can tell you, the, the money we get, I can't afford to keep going like we've been going.
Oh, I, I know, I disagree with you on that.
And so if, if this, if this gets us down the road, instead of, we already know they're not gonna last twenty years, you know, if we, if we do a two-inch hot mix. If it gets us down the road thirty to forty, and, and yeah, you've got to pour more concrete, then I can tell you, I'm all for it. You know, and the more I think about the private part, he gonna take mustard semi on that again.
So really today, though, we're just talking about inserting the concrete cross-section into the, into our, our, our subdivision regulations, not making a decision on that, so.
Oh, we're making decisions.
We're out, well, we're good to insert it and we come back later and talk about it.
Back, it's on there today. We're gonna make a motion one way or the other, see what it goes.
Nothing in the, it eliminates the asphalt standard. Right now, what's in the draft rule is to add a concrete standard. If the court wanted to eliminate the asphalt standard and propose only the concrete standard, it could be done today. You guys would, we would have to talk about the wording of it and so on and so forth and whether you want, or you could tell me that's what you want. Go back and we could draft that, that language into the code. What's in the actual rule as it's written today is
is the option.
Insert a concrete standard into the, into the, into the rule. There's a couple of changes. One is to the concrete pore standard that we have now, about the, the rebar and, and the strength of the concrete. Use the minimum on that in our, in our concrete section, and then the actual cross-sections that we've added in for each of the different road, road sizes. So yes, the answer is to both of you, yes, yes, it can be added, yes, if you want to do something beyond that. It's open for you guys to discuss today.
I think if, if we're gonna make that big of a change, I think, I, I think we had really good buy-in on our subdivision regulations when we invited some builders and some developers to, um, voice and have a chance to talk about it. Um, so they just understand how we got there. And, um, rather than just say it and then hit the proverbial gavel or whatever, you know, that's it and go on to the next thing. So I think we'd have some, that, that'd be my thoughts. If we're gonna do it, then I'd do it today. That we could, we could put it out there to have another little public hearing and have, either invite them or just get the word out like, hey, we're gonna talk about this, you know. Y'all have some objections or some conversations breaking.
I don't mind putting a, putting an asphalt, I mean, the concrete option into the, the subdivision policy today. But voting whether we're going straight, like what their discussion is, I can't be for that. Now, I'll throw something else out there, you know, could we do a hybrid deal to where urban roads are concrete and rural roads are asphalt?
So currently, our urban roads are required to be concrete with curving gutter. Rural, yeah, rural can be, now, if you we had some intermittent standard between the one acre, one-twenty-five foot frontage minimums and the, you got another standard, another, another category of, of development in there. Then I guess you could insert that concrete standard into that category. But right now, we only have two categories, urban and rural, rural ones, open ditch and asphalt, urban is concrete, curb, curb back, curb back.
Okay.
And so the, the designation's determined by minimum acreage being one acre and frontage being one-twenty-five.
Yeah.
Anything below that.
You can do it based on lot size.
Yeah, what, what I spent up there, two-hundred and something thousand dollars to do, uh, four-thousand foot, and it took a while to get the money saved up, you know, I mean, just.
Pretty close to seven-hundred on mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, you're taking, that was taken.
And that's not redoing the road, that's just going on top of it.
Yeah, open your sub base, putting, yeah, you know, and, uh, I know how long it takes to, like I said, grab it together. And, uh, it took a long time. And, um, you know, if this could ensure that we get down the road that much further, then I can tell you, I'm all in.
I'm all in too.
And the developers, the developers are always gonna play you. That's just.
You know, you're right, right?
You know?
Yeah, I don't do roads. I think I've made that clear over two and a half years.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, like, I mean, this, this affects.
The sustain, then it fails.
Yeah, and this basically affects what they're doing in the policy. That's why we need to talk about it now. Because I mean, you don't need to spend a bunch of time on asphalt parts if it's not gonna be there. And, uh, that's just kind of where I'm at.
I, I see, Stephanie, they, they upped the PSI to four thousand, is that following text top regulation, uh, standard?
I, I don't know what text top regulations are, but, um, it, it's a compass standard, industry standard.
Okay, I, I didn't know where the numbers come from, so.
Well, I, I've thought about it a lot, I have, because I've taken in lots of roads and looking at what we've taken, there's no possible way that you're gonna be able to keep up.
Well, let's use that for an example. Let's use the, what was it, forty-nine miles or whatever. What if they said, you know what, we don't want to build these roads out of concrete, we'll build them asphalt and we'll maintain them ourselves, then you wouldn't have forty-nine hundred miles of road.
No, but you have, I, I can tell you, that, that, that's gonna backfire like hell on you, because then you gonna have all them people in there that is gonna be eating on your foot. You know, and, and eventually there is gonna be enough people to make a change up here, you know, and, and, and that's.
The day's coming.
Yeah, there's, I mean, you, you take all the people in Wildwood Shore, if they weren't private and they turned around and said, hey, we need you taking our roads. There's, and not that, like I said, I would give in, I wouldn't give in, they could vote me out.
Right.
But, but there'll be somebody that gives in. All them people in Wildwood Shore say, we want to be a county road now. What you gonna do?
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I mean, I've got a subdivision, you know, that wants to come in and I tell them every year, they get a new P O A president, I'm like, sorry.
Yeah.
You know, and they go on to.
And them subdivisions have been around for a long time, you know, so.
All right, so what, what do y'all wanna do today? I don't, I don't think I'm ready to vote on, well, I know, if we're gonna say concrete, no matter what, no matter here, over there and everywhere, then I'm.
Well, tell you what, Bill.
I'll be a no on that one.
You're getting old, cranky in your old age, but if, if you wanna involve the developers, let's push it off to the next court.
Yeah.
Uh, I might need.
Our next two courts, but.
You got posted.
Are you?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, I'll tell you now, you're not gonna change my mind whatsoever, because I've been thinking about this a long time. So, but if you wanna involve them, I'm fine with that.
I think it worked well when we built our policy, so if we're gonna make something this major, I'd, I'd like to have them show up.
We could probably do them.
I would, let's go, let's, let's go two courts down the road.
Let me make sure I know what date we're referring to, but.
We got to be like public, May fifth. We got anybody online that wants to talk during public hearing? Anybody in the?
I mean, there's several people on.
Everybody wanna talk besides us? Okay.
And just push it to May, May fifth. Yeah, let's push it to the end.
No, no action today at all.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I.
Well, we're still in public hearing. We got anything else on public discussion on this?
I don't know, really.
Were we talking about, um, at this time, or are we gonna modify? We talked about number of, um, structures on a piece of property, like, like three mobile homes on a piece of property right now. Is that in this or is that something else to come?
Yeah, it's not in this.
Okay, so I want.
We can do that on May fifth.
The only, only place where. The only, only place where that, where that type of thing is addressed is in the definition of, uh,
Mobile home?
Uh, not mobile home, mobile home park policies, separate policy, RV parks and, uh, um, uh, multi-family, multi- community, there's two definitions in there. That, that mirror what's in the mobile home park policy.
Right.
The mobile home park is a separate policy from subdivision regulations.
Right, okay.
Sure, I, I don't know where you're headed with that, but the case law has indicated that when a county attempts to establish limits to the number of structures on the traffic plan, like, that it's exercising a zoning density, which is not authorized.
But we do, but now.
No.
No.
No, what's in there now is what we define as, it's an exemption, so if it's, if it, if it basically says that you have to, instead of meeting the full plan or, if you meet this criteria, you can meet this lesser, like, difference standard, which points you over to the mobile home park standard. That's what's in the code, doesn't, not really trigger it off of how many you can put on a piece of property.
All right, so, you know, or.
Trigger, what you're interested is when that trigger occurs, how that exemption is happening.
Yeah. Right now, we say, right now, we say more than.
Adding a, adding a complete waiver if it's below a certain limit, is, is what, is what you're talking about.
Yeah, because ours, ours says two or more.
Yeah, two or more.
Two or more, so when you put your second one on there, now you're a mobile home park. So in today's, in today's cost of property and, you know, people who have a two acre lot, they wanna push one, two, three on there. They have a mobile home park now, and they gotta have a paved road and all this stuff like this, so it's, um, I would like, if that's not today, maybe we can, let's talk about that at May.
Well, and it's, it's two for rent, right?
Yeah, again, you guys are talking about the mobile home park.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but that's what triggered.
Yes, two or more. This is, the idea is, and it, that triggers the separate section of the code, which is another major housing regulations. It's the subdivision regulations, we've linked them to create a, a, an alternative path for people that are doing multi-family type developments. We, we've linked, we pointed from this code to the other code, but the other code is a separate code.
Okay, um, four point one eight on page twenty-one. It's probably not something we can put in there, but I'm just making sure, is this the paragraph that when Wildwood Shores comes in and says, I want to maintain the existing right of way width, and I've done it, and other people have done it, is this, is this the paragraph that makes them, um, provide the right of way when they said to buy a piece of property right here that we.
Yes, so it's pointing you over to section five, and five point five is the addition there, when the many body replies propose order to consolidate lots, so specifically for lot consolidation. When they're taking two lots, but basically, yes, it would help, for example, Wildwood Shores, you guys have a lot of validations. So it would help them for variance every time that they come, uh, and you guys look at it through the lens of a variance, as long as the, the lots are being consolidated. Now, if you're dividing, we left that out for now, we may consider adding that later on if you guys want to. But then it takes away your consideration of if you need the existing right of way at the time of the division, because of the division, right? You may need some existing right of way to deal with drainage created under division. This is just about taking multiple lots and making less lots.
So this one here, they, we exempted them from the minimum frontage, but not existing right of way regulations.
Oh, yes, frontage.
Okay.
Right now, you could add the other end.
I mean, that, would that be a thought that you might wanna, because, you know, they come up here, we've got it, we can, they kind of said, Wildwood Shores, and I've got a couple, and there's some other, right? There's another, some other subdivision somewhere. Or it's, you know, it's narrower than our seventy feet, but we're not gonna.
Right now, when it's addressing code and basically the sort of the, the, the way that we've been handling that, based on the court's previous direction is, we're giving the precinct commissioner, we needed, and the rest, language in the court that lets us make that call without a variance. Um, if there is additional, then we deal with the lighting agency. So it lets you look at it case by case, because in most cases, the existing roadway suspension. If we, if we completely built it out, then there wouldn't be any decision-making process, it would just be, it would just be left alone every time.
Okay, um, when I wrote down page thirty of the paragraph, that was on my computer at work, so I don't know if it's the same page here. There it is, okay, yeah, page thirty, section A, the opening paragraph at the top. Um, but first, there's a section in there that says, of course, all new lots, including lots subject to an exception, must have lot frontages required by these regulations. If an owner intends to create subdivision utilizing private roads, the owner must receive a direct variance from Commissioner's Court.
Right now, the, the policy that you guys have been, this is not new, this is.
Yeah.
Policy you guys are under now, uh, this section was included for if a variance was ever granted, to make it simpler to deal with, like, in other words, sort of pre-thinking through minimal, minimal requirements if a variance was granted. But this section doesn't stand all by itself, it's only triggered if a variance is applied for or granted.
Okay, so I don't understand it.
Gives the court something to point to in the case that the court decides to grant a variance to allow subdivision of private roads, privately maintained road, proposed private, private roads, I'm sorry, private roads. So it, it, it was let, it was left in in case court granted variance, instead of having to run through what the expectations were gonna be, the court thought, if, if we ever do, we know at a minimum, we're gonna expect these things to be done, if we ever do. But it doesn't lay out that it, it has to be done. So it still requires a variance to come forward and ask for a development under private subdivision. Not give the public right of ways and so on and so, it still requires a variance. And that's addressed up before, and it's just reflected in this header right here.
All right. I'm good with that, for that, that's, that's all I got.
It is a little confusing.
The way it's worded is.
Section here that says private subdivisions.
Yeah.
The reason it was left in was if these were things that the court had worked out, like that they wanted, if there ever was one, so it was put in here sort of as a, a guidance, a guidance, if those were ever granted.
Yeah. I'd almost like to see some words behind direct variance, asking for what variance they were going to be asking for. Like, if we're gonna request a direct variance.
Oh, the section that requires.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's why it read weird to me, isn't it?
Yeah, we could.
You just need a variance, all right?
Draft that into.
If you would put that, that would make me feel better, if it was pointing at something else, what your variance, and then I had something to go look at.
And we could point back to the section that doesn't allow.
All right, yeah, that'd make me feel better, thanks. Ronnie give up on us?
No, he's, yeah, phone call. Anybody else got anything on public hearing? Public hearing is closed at ten thirty-five. Forty-seven, discuss, take action on order twenty twenty-four dash five four to amend the Walker County subdivision regulations under chapter two thirty-two of the Texas Local Government Code. We gonna pass on that, or you wanna take out the concrete and do the rest?
Um.
Stacey is gonna bring it back.
Has to be brought back to court on May fifth, twenty-five.
This is, yeah, we gonna make that motion on the, by help, but.
All right, let's, let's pass till May fifth on that. Commissioner White, you okay?
Yeah.
While we've got it open, is there any help to anybody to discuss or give?
One question, so if there's, I, I don't remember how this comes, inside DTJ, if the subdivision falls in right now, what is the standard for the city?
That's it.
What, what, what are their standards? Do you remember?
They allow asphalt roads.
Yeah.
Let's, let's put them on a deadline for May fifth to have a answer to us and.
We need to poke it up a little bit.
So if you'll make them aware, and I'll follow up, that we need to have it back to court for the May fifth hearing.
DTJ group.
Yep, they've had enough time, they got new manager, they need to get rolling.
Yeah, I agree.
And if, if the ETJ, obviously, I would, didn't hear what y'all were saying, but if, if they build it in the ETJ, and they don't meet higher standards, whatever, with, with the concrete, then we just don't take it.
Yeah.
You know, that's the simple answer, we don't take.
That's why I was.
That's a simple answer, but goes back to that complicated answer.
We've still been taking them.
You got a different court, you know?
That's gonna, yeah.
And they control the vote of.
That's never gonna change, I mean, because people up here change. Forty years, fifty years.
We're on forty-seven.
Problem solved.
All right, what, what are we doing anyway?
We're gonna pass on forty-seven.
Okay.
It's on a vote they were passing.
All right, we're gonna pass forty-seven. Forty-eight, discuss and take action on approval of construction examination guidelines.
We can hold this too, this is the document that we use, that we. Send the court board, like, and look at draft form, want the court to see it, if there's any changes to it, basically lays it out. Uh, we have, when we do our pre-con meetings, the developers, uh, contractors sign those, and they understand we're all on the same page. This can wait, we can address this at the next, uh, court when we're addressing the other. Unless you guys wanna look at it or do, talk about it now. No, because it gets into asphalt remar, which. I agree, court know we're headed to concrete, but I'd rather pass on it till we.
Everybody good with passing?
Yep, I'm good with it.
I know.
Okay, pass on forty-eight. Forty-nine, discuss and take action on approval for the preparation of applicant, application documents and estimated cost of rehabilitation of Stubblefield Lake Road Forest Service Road number two one five from Stubblefield Lake Bridge to FM thirteen seventy-five for potential funding under the American Recovery Act, discuss disaster recovery supplemental funding. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, so this is the project we're working on with the Forest Service, um, basically, we're asking for permission to forward with the, using our contracted engineer while to, uh, we want to put something actually down, get some branders on paper. Um, what they're gonna need is a, uh, estimate, right, um, but we wanna get something down there, have the conversation a lot, Bob, or have conversations with Forest Service. Um, that way they can come up with an estimate, we're gonna have to pay for, if we don't, we gotta work it out to where we don't have to pay for this, right? So, Andy can explain it better, but long-term, what's just gonna happen is, Blile's gonna go out, gonna look at it, engineer it, get an estimate to engineer it, and then we're gonna, the way I've been told is, we're gonna get that approved, we're gonna fund that, and then once they do all the engineering and then, uh, do a good part of that package, um, have that, get that funded all through the Forest Service, so uh, Andy can probably tell you the technical terms, and Stephanie is better than I can, but that's.
Brandon's been working on this, I'm not sure all, uh, who's involved in it, but we got involved very recently, and the idea that the Forest Service wants upfront before they can proceed, and just talking about setting the funding aside, is sort of a, breaking a lot of the ballpark estimate, right, of what the whole project is gonna cost, engineering and construction. Right, not a detailed plans at this point, not a detailed engineering estimate at this point, but sort of overall, this is what we think it's gonna run around. All right, um, and then also to talk to them about the project in more detail and bring in Blile to maybe have a, at least a preliminary conversation with them to make sure that we're meeting all of our requirements, to open it up as a formal project before court, so that if we need assistance from purchasing or whoever, it's, it's been before court, you guys are aware that Brandon's working on this and support us moving forward with some limited work, before it gets, any contract gets approved for, you know, the actual amount, they would have to come back.
Yeah, right, right.
Almost gotta be pretty low than forty minutes presented.
One second, yeah.
Moving, seconded it all on paper, raise your hand. Motion carries. Fifty, discuss and take action on Michael and Deborah Nettick request for variance to the Walker County Floodplain Management Regulations for Permanent Application Number twenty twenty-four dash zero five two one Green Ridge Shore Subdivision.
Well, um, the court recently granted a variance for a home that was being built out on the Trinity River Basin. Um, that, our, uh, purchase of engineering services provided the court report base flood elevation that was included on the, uh, on the base flood elevation after the. The request, um, is that there's another site, we already have approved them for permitting at a higher elevation, it's another site that is requesting to use a, a similar elevation. I do not have, I mean, for the court's full, full disclosure, I do not have individual engineering data on this site. Right, so it is on the same basin, it is closer to the lake than the original site is, a little different neighborhood, it's not the same exact geographic location. But we'll kind of give you guys some additional information on it, and I don't have any engineering backup that addresses this particular site like I did on the other site. Their request is sort of piggybacking on that, um, I think that at some point, one of the things the court may look at, a little disassociated from this act, the specific request is, I think, Bill will talk about that in a little bit in a second, is, uh, the court taking a look at the impacts of us granting that variance, they need to use that variance on the area as a whole, and really the court wants to, um, so, and sort of look, look toward maybe doing some additional engineering work to, to, um, to, um, get to a, 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 um, document that would impact the whole watershed. I, um, with a little more detail, we have now, right now, the only data that have is the data the court previously saw about some of our concerns.
Right.
It's a BLE data upfront, the court funded, um, so, a little bit of work, uh, a year ago, I guess, and then the application that you guys processed from Mr. Frazier. Again, they don't have that data that Mr. Frazier had funded his particular site, his particular operation. Um, we requested, uh, just to give them a heads up, there is a development certification form that has to be done that deals with, um, you know, whether or not the structure design, because they've already had it designed for a higher elevation, they had that form done for the higher elevation. Those would have to be redone at the elevation, even if the court allows for. So whether or not they can get that, I don't know, uh, but, but I would not, obviously, on the other one, when the court allowed the lower elevation, they still aren't part of the full development certification form and all that to be filled out. Um, they also had a BL, a, a base flood elevation form that was filled out at the other elevation that we don't have on this one, because they would have had to hire an engineer to do that work. So that's the request, um.
So, so what we got, we got, and Tom, this is Thomas Lake Road Green Ridge Shores area. Uh, during the last flood we had in April, um, they, the flood hit a hundred and forty feet plus another two inches on top of that. Um, we had several houses that had two, three feet of water in them, but they were all below the one forty elevation. Anybody that was one forty and a half, they were high and dry. As y'all remember, in twenty twenty-two, FEMA basically established a building elevation out there, basically a hundred and forty-nine.
I remember that.
Put them, so I got three, or I got three brand-new constructions that are fifteen, sixteen feet in the air, because we had two foot of water underground where their house was at. So if y'all recall, Mr. Frazier, who lives in Lakeland, he's the one that worked with Blile, and they found the big relevation study that said one forty-three is fine, there's no reason to go any higher than one forty-three, that should be, that should be ample. So we granted Mr. Frazier that variance. As the crow flies, this house is a mile and a half from, maybe a mile, it's off the tip of Lakeland on the little peninsula, and it comes right around to Thomas Lake Road, he's like right over here. So its water's gonna be exactly the same. He's the only house I have in the neighborhood under construction that wants, that has to be up in the other, I had two guys ahead of him that went up into the sky, and they're like way up there. So this is the last one, um, anybody that come in after that, when I, if we talked to him, I would tell him, hey, look, we're, we're working on an elevation, let's, you know, just, just wait. Um, but I hate to see him go twenty feet in the air, because he's actually a little bit lower than these other guys were. So he wants to go to as low as one forty-three, but I think he can, I think he's asking for one forty-five to do that, so based on what we did with Mr. Frazier, I don't have any issues with granting the variance to let him build at, um, establishes, did he say one forty-five, is that what he put on it, or did he?
Application.
One forty three, so let him build at one forty three if he wants to, it's a decision that he can still make, you know, he can say, hey, I can build as low as one forty three, if I wanna go higher, I can go higher, but I gotta be at least one forty three. And feel comfortable based on what we just did, Mr. Frazier. All the decisions after that will be on him.
So, from my, from our standpoint, I can't provide you interest for, for extrapolation of that original location over to this other site. So, if the court makes this decision, the court would be granting the base flood elevation, I don't have engineering backup on this particular site that. Like we had on the other one for the court to reliable, you would be doing this basically extrapolating other to this site, but I can't provide you.
But their, but their study was over the entire lake, it just, this.
The application of it was only to the particular site, I'm not arguing with you on that.
Well, that, and it was paid for by Mr. Frazier.
I just want you guys to operate.
Frazier paid for Blile to get a study that was already done by somebody else, so there's, the study's out there, it, all the numbers are out there, and, um. EPA, FEMA is gonna bring that number down, they said basically on a phone call, when we, when we were talking to FEMA and the Water Development Board about that. They had zero, they couldn't give us the official, hey, you know, yes, but they, they had zero objections to, to into us bringing this number down, realizing they did a. A single line drawing and just kind of like push and said, it should be one forty nine, well, showing all this information, they were like, yeah, we see what you're talking about, that's actually a realistic number, put it together, send it to us. We should be able to take care of that, so, um. I have, I have zero objections to it, I mean, the burden still falls on, you know, to make the decision to put it there, and if he can get insurance on it and stuff like that.
Yeah, that, then to be clear, if you guys regulatorily say the one thirty three is sufficient, that's a regulation, I would say it'll be, it'll go under community determined for the base flood elevation.
Yeah.
But, uh, the insurance, we have no control over how those rates are set, so if I insure, he uses the original number, the one forty. Seven point seven number, that, I don't know what that would do to their rate, you could be clear on, I have no control over that.
How's he even get financing? Get this building at the one forty three?
I mean, Mr. Frazier, obviously, he sucked it up and he didn't borrow.
He, this is, he's putting manufactured home up on a stilt structure, is what he's, yeah, that's what he's doing, so he's paying for it out of his pocket, it's just gonna be a cash purchase. To put it up in the sky. So, I mean, those, and those guys are, you talk about up in the.
Yeah, it's ridiculous how high those.
But I'm thinking of repercussions that's gonna come down the line from the ones that have already done it.
I, I had actually spoken with the other two when they still had their posts in the ground, and I told them, you know, we're a couple of months away, because we just heard the TRA study. And I said, we're a couple of months away from maybe being able to make some movements on this, and they're like, we're fine, we're gonna put ours in the sky, so they put them in the sky, and they are.
They won't flood.
No, they're not flooded, they will not.
I'll have them with that, they're not gonna flood.
They are way, way, way up in the sky, like I say, he, he's a, my, Mr. Frazier was a one-off, and this guy is, he's like, he's the only one, only other one I have out there in my entire precinct that's building. And he's been, he's just been waiting, um, to get the answer, and I, like, once again, I have no issues with, with making it happen, with telling them that.
So, to be clear, the development certification form is certifying the foundation, you know, back to the flood zone for the impacts on the actual. That's what that document deals with, construction. Base flood elevation determination form that we ordered to acquire is usually filled out by an engineer and says, this is what we believe the base flood elevation is for this site. For the other side, we had a base flood elevation form filled out by an engineer at the lower elevation, and then they used that big giant study and all that stuff to back up their determination. On this site, if, if we require the same thing, uh, of these individuals, they would have to go back out, if we didn't do a community determination at the one forty three. If we said, no, you still gotta do the base flood elevation form and have it certified by an engineer, they'd have to go to an engineer and have them try to determine one forty three. If they do that, they're likely gonna be in for, you know, having to go through, you know, provide that same backup and go through that same whole process with an engineer. If the court doesn't want that to have to happen, then, then the waiver would be to determine the base flood elevation at one forty three, um, finish for elevation at one forty three. Without the need for them to go out and get the base flood elevation form, uh, certified by a engineer.
Yeah, I mean, that puts the monkey on us, then.
Mikey, yes, the Mikey is on, would be on me. Just so it's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, what's your sales pitch, Bill?
Bill, well, I think the sales pitch now would be to, um. But, and I think, and I got no problem putting what he just said on the end of it there, of saying, I'm that, I'll make the motion to approve, um. Fifty, yeah, approve number fifty, um, with a, um. Base flood elevation, um. As established by an engineer, I'll say that, that way, if he goes and does the homework and he gets the stamp on the print saying, hey, it's one forty three, then his stamp is on it.
Okay, I can go along with that, engineers.
Yeah, so, so you're saying that he's gonna go out and get it, say, Blile to recertify, just like Mr. Frazier done.
Or somebody.
Somebody. All right, well, I'll go with you, yeah, you got that, but, but him picking off, him picking backing off of, off of Mr. Frazier's, I, I don't, I don't agree with.
All right, that's.
You want me to bring that back when, when I get that document, or?
Uh, if he, if he, if he gets all the paperwork to you with what we just said, we're not objecting to it, and he has an engineered BLE or baseline, base flood elevation, then I think you're good to go.
Yeah, no, I'll give you a second.
Yeah, motion and second all, favor raise your hand.
Yeah.
Motion carry.
Okay.
Fifty one, discuss and take action on fee determination for proposed Pontywood solar project.
And they are online. Remember the last time that the fee that they proposed would be what we go with, right, I mean, that's what we're saying now.
That's completely up to you.
That's your motion.
Oh, that's my motion.
Moving seconded all, favor raise your hand.
Do a, we can do a, uh, all in one permit, multi-property permit for the proposal.
Yes.
Yeah, or so the money.
Yeah, I think I remember seventy seven, yeah.
All right, fifty two, discuss and take action on E number twenty twenty five dash zero zero three ZMT Group LLC. That guy, boundary line adjustment, A three point three to include owners, a Bushnell Amendment Language Regarding Hatchery on Survey. See that?
I'm gonna announce that one.
I've got, right there?
I'll be attached.
That's Brandon's.
This, this language.
Yeah.
We don't normally add language when we grant these, so they're specifically asking to add this language. Onto the face of the affidavit for exception. And it refers to, hold on to the attachment. On the survey?
No.
There should be a survey.
They're not gonna reach, pardon me.
It's a giant, it's a giant disclaimer.
Yeah.
It's not there, it's not like a.
They online?
Moving property line?
Well, the property line, we're already moved, that's the reason.
Oh.
Uh, there's a Tom online that's.
Not a home ding.
No, there's nothing like that on there.
Um, are you talking to this guy? A lady, whatever it is, ZMT group.
So, this, these properties were divided. There's an area that I. And this is the area that we're referring, this is what it says, the hatch area, it's referring to this area, so we're giving. So, so.
That or that.
This, so the property was originally subdivided.
Creek.
Right, and, and it was, there were, uh, uh, along the. High forty five service road right here in thirteen five, so second. But when we went, ran a compliance check on it, even though it fronts on the service road, both tracks, um, nothing was ever filed with us, and so when they came back to do it, there was a discrepancy. Here it says, um. Severed from a portion of the original, there was multiple tracks. They manipulated the boundary on, and so this area, what they're wanting to do is. Attach this statement to that hatched area. Says hatched area dash line along the east side of the hatched area shown today is for demonstrated working going. They're making sure that it's clear that, not necessarily moving that land from one track to the other that's in the hatched area, because it's in their area right now. Think that's what, what their goal is for the language, um, property, uh, or, or impact on improvements to the property. So, again, this movement of this line, they're worried about it affecting their title. This is regulatory documents, not a plat, so filing of this doesn't move a property line on our side of the fence, it's not a flat, but we've never attached an outside note.
Yeah, if we're watering up in somebody else's fight is what it sounds like to me, and giving it validity.
We, we've never done it, um.
Let's not start.
Yeah.
So, not saying that we couldn't, because.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Who, is, is, is ZMT group requesting this, or is the, uh, other? Grant or is the ZMT?
So.
The grantee is the public.
They went to them because they were part of the original parent track. This is the group that's requesting it.
Yeah.
They had to involve this owner because they, they have the rest of the original parent track. This owner is not applying for anything right now, it's this owner that's applying.
So, have, have we contacted?
This is the owner that's requesting the note.
Yeah, I think we need to stay out of it.
Yeah, we're gonna pass on this right now, it's a lot, it's still being clear, and they'll see all understanding.
All right, pass on fifty two. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Fifty three, discuss and take action on approval of plans for Hutton realignment project.
Stephanie, you're. Brandon's.
Watch pretty clean.
You can approve fifty three as well.
Oh, you gotta keep explaining a lot more. Yeah. I'm talking about a lot more.
Lucy, you scroll down a little bit, we can kinda see some examples over here.
Yeah, what do you wanna look at, Andy, or just ask the quick?
No, just, just, just kinda explain what's going on, I guess.
All right, keep going down.
That's where they go.
It's where the fire station, yeah.
Keep going down, whoa.
Right there.
Come up just a little bit.
All right.
Existing county road. Andy, you're supposed to be up there doing some. Making us move this where it's in, where it's a safer deal. Possibly utilize that introway. Where it goes up to this fire station, this is Station Seventy Nine. This stretch here. From this roadway here will be abandoned eventually. This, if the court approves it, right, if the court.
Thank Andy.
This is the new roadway, um. And this, this falls on the approvals or not, but.
Once it's abandoned, does it go to the fire station, basically, is that what we're doing? So, so who are we getting, who, who are you getting this land from? Where, where you straightening it?
It's D two.
Yes, so they're giving you the land.
They're giving me this.
For this.
Giving them that back. Now, we don't, we don't own it, this'll be an easement, the other one is prescribed rights, Stephanie will kinda, kinda think walk you through the. But, um. It's really a road and bridge project, I'm always involved sort of just in the planning side.
What, what is the distance, I can't read it, in between the road and the old road?
This distance here?
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't.
What is that number, they're gonna give you that number up there, doesn't it? The reason I ask is because.
This, that's, that's drainage area.
There's no guarantee that you're gonna be able to use that existing texted up entryway to the fire station or to the old county.
We, I've already worked through that with text type, text I've actually installed this new culvert with the intention of that old one staying there as the driveway.
Okay, so, so you're for sure, you're gonna be able to hold that access point? Okay.
I've already worked that out with text type. Like I said, they went ahead and put this, they've already put this culvert in, now, we need to get to approve this and move forward with building that, uh, moving that extension.
Yeah, are you, uh, funding it out of your budget, or are they assisting you with it, or?
Everything's been out of my.
Couple things to note, so we're tying into the existing road, and also an existing text road, and so where we're tying in, the ditch steps were matching, were not the eighteen inch minimum. For cars, I just wanna make sure you're aware of that, also cross slopes, we're matching existing cross slopes. Um, and transitioning to, to meet the minimum, as you mentioned, to meet the minimum, or the typical cross slope. Because of those tie-in points, we're not meeting your minimum standard, because you can't meet the minimum standard when you're tying into something existing.
We're gonna pour that concrete?
Uh, this was started back in the.
I'm just checking.
We may hold him back. You might have to hold on to the fifth of May.
I got a motion from Brandon.
So, because of the curvature of the road, we're tying in at a much safer, um, angle, it's one fifty.
Yeah.
So, we've got a radius there that's less than three hundred foot radius, so we do have a warning sign reducing, or warning to, uh, of a twenty five mile per hour speed limit.
I wanna make it clear that, not just court, to everybody else, this is for safety.
Yeah.
That's the only reason not moving this and getting a, getting a ninety three in here. That's the biggest, I didn't wanna spend the money to do. Any of it.
Concrete's out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate you doing it in concrete, I'll give you a second for that.
All right, I got a motion and second all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Let's go back.
No concrete added to the.
Let's go back to thirty nine, discuss and take action to retain outside counsel.
And we, Mr. Earl, before he, so he can get out of here or not.
I think he's got.
Clinton, can we get one citizen input out here before we go into the executive session?
Okay. Citizens in foot. Earl Carter, you have five minutes, Miss French will give you a time, time limit when it's up to five minutes.
We appreciate you waiting.
And, and we can't respond to you.
Yeah, but we do appreciate you waiting.
Yes, sir.
First, let me say that I represent me, myself, I'm not representing anybody else. Uh, I'm here because of recent current events. I've observed and I felt compelled to come here and. You've got some information that hopefully you'll put to good use in the future. These electronic devices that we use in our voting processes are not secure and they cannot be made secure. I know this because of almost sixty years of dealing with those kinds of devices, not necessarily voting, but electronic devices. Every one of them, by design and of necessity, has backdoors built into them. When I say backdoor, I mean, a method of getting into them. To, to do maintenance, i- if somebody, if it weren't so. If somebody did something and. Bricked that machine. That machine goes in the trash, you have to have a way to get into, into those, the software or the hardware. And bypass all the security measures. I also tell you that I was an election judge in this county for many, many years, Ronnie can attest.
Yes, sir.
I go back to the days when we. Hand marked ballots. Dropped them in a ballot box and counted them at the precinct that night. And as much as it pains me to say that. I think our elections are. So important that we cannot continue to take the risk of the, that the electronics provides. And we need to get back to the way we used to do it. And that's. I, I don't ask you to take my word for any of that, there are any number of experts out there that. I would hope that you folks would consult with when you. On this subject in the future. I don't think we've had a problem here in this county yet. That does not mean that we won't have a problem in the future. A problem in the future. And the last thing I want to tell you is. This business of can't be connected to the internet. There are lies by. Commission and there are lies about omission. And what they don't tell you is, when they say you can't connect it to the internet, they mean by, by any conventional. That we're. Unless you yourself build every component that goes into that thing, you really don't know what's in it. And it can have. Something in it that I can tell. It, you don't turn on until I tell you to turn on. Oh. They, just because it doesn't have an ethernet cord in the back of it, doesn't mean. That it can't connect to the internet. And. I, I just, that's really all I have to say, if you have. Um. Like I said, there are any number of. Experts out there that will confirm everything I've told you, and I would hope that you would consult with them in the, in the future.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Earl.
Yeah.
Thank you for being patient and staying with us.
Yeah. All right, we'll go to thirty-nine, discuss and take action, retain outside counsel for civil lawsuit. We'll go into executive session under five five one point oh seven one. I feel pleased.
And before you leave, you can pick me up.